So Commissioner Weller is not with us today. He's feeling a little under the weather, so he's home this morning. But I think we can take care of this. It's like a lot of calls. All right, item number two, discuss and take possible action on approval of personnel action forms.
The first one is William Self, Facilities Manager. David Southwell, Retired. Nancy Newtons, Animal Control Officer. Jason Garcia, Deputy. Jason May, Moving from Deputy to Civil Process. Jacob Moreno, Diversion. Tyler Whitehead, News R O. Mia Bowser, Increase in Slots. Wyden Scherpart, Case Manager Two. And then, Mason Braggman, Compressors Officer and Head Equipment Operator. Macy Edwards, Increase in Slot. Weston Eisen, Increase in Slot. Oh, I'm going to go over it. Deanna Johnson, Tiana Johnson, Increase in Slot. Ryan Maddick, Increase in Slot. Lisa O'Roan, Increase in Slot. Robbie Morris, Same. Mala Lugo, Same. Catherine Samms. Vanessa Scavo, Increase in Slot. And Natasha Bowlett, Increase in Slot.
I will make a point to approve Personnel Action Form. Have a motion in a second to approve the Personnel Action Forms. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number three, discuss and take possible action on approval of line item transfers.
Good morning. We have a couple of line item transfers. The first of the four are from the precincts, and these four are for prior fiscal year, FY 2223, to balance out a couple of accounts that were over budget. Precinct Two is shifting a total of $196,040 from reserves into various accounts. Precinct Three is moving $17,000 out of contracts and into fuel. Precinct Four, a total of $54,000 out of reserves into road and bridge material and recurrent maintenance for vehicles. Precinct One, a total of $215,993 into various accounts. Again, those four were for prior fiscal year 2223. Then we have two for current fiscal year, one for non-departmental, will be some money out of salary, other at comp time and into the department head, and that's for our Facilities Manager, and then various departments for our new incentive policy. A total of $11,600.
I'll move to approve the line item transfers. Have a motion in a second to approve the line item transfers. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number four, discuss and take possible action on approval of accounts payable.
Yes, the over $10,000, as well on the other page. We have two line item transfers, jail prison care, and the total of this AP is $887,000, $858.68.
I will move that we approve accounts payable with the exception of the 51 fund, which is DA forfeiture on page 12. Have a move, a motion in a second to approve the accounts payable with the exception of the 51 fund for the DA. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number five, discuss and take possible action on disbursement of funds since the last Commissioners' Court meeting.
Yes, utilities will pay the amount of $63,000 and $461,000 to 53.
I will approve that disbursement of funds. Have a motion in a second that we approve the disbursement of funds since the last Commissioners' Court meeting. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number six, discuss and take possible action on acceptance of donation of road materials from Park Construction for Precinct One roads. Commissioner Castileon.
Yeah, so we had a call from Park Construction that they had some excess material off a US 90 that was stockpile and stayed right away. They offered up this material to Medina County to be used for improvements of our own. I would gladly accept this material. It's just really good quality. We've worked with Park Construction in the past on many things, and they've put forth this material for the county's use. We're looking to use it right at the location where the stockpile is at, the local county roads around the town of Dundley. We should be able to use that material to improve those roadways. So I'm really grateful that they thought of us to be able to use this material.
So we do have a donation form this morning, and I'm just going to read it real quick. Whereas mill recycled asphalt material is gifted to Medina County from Park Construction, Texas Incorporated. Whereas the mill recycled asphalt material will be used for maintenance and repair of county roads within the Dundley area of Precinct One. Whereas the value of the material is approximately $10,500. Whereas the Commissioners' Court wishes to express its appreciation for the gift of mill recycled asphalt material for maintenance and repair of county roads within the Dundley area of Precinct One. Now therefore be resolved when Commissioners' Court of Medina County that accepts with gratitude the gift from Park Construction in Texas, a mill recycled asphalt material valuing at $10,500 for maintenance and repair of county roads within the Dundley area of Precinct One. So I will... I will make a point to accept the donation. In due day, we have movement. Please all.
Absolutely.
Have a motion. Have a motion in a second to accept the road materials from Park Construction. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. All opposed, same time. Motion carries. All right, item number seven, we're going to give an update, Ms. Debbie Southwell, on Hank Incorporated.
I had a little bit nervous in front of y'all. When John and I started Hank, almost 14 years ago, we wanted to provide and aid for the kids who didn't have a name because of mental health and abuse. Through the donations of so many wonderful people in this county and outside of this county, it's been a success, and it's going to include three foster homes. Well, almost 14 years later, with time comes change. The foster homes were great in theory, but they're not working out. The Divine Home has been empty for over a year now. We just lost our foster parents for the original Honda home, and finding quality parents is very, very difficult, if not impossible. Also, SJRC Texas contracted with the state to take over the legal cases from the Department of Family and Protective Services. So they're doing the same thing Hank was designed to do. They're overseeing the lea... We don't oversee legal cases, but they oversee the legal cases. But they're also have the resources to provide when the children need something. They're doing the Christmas party, the things that Hank was doing. We don't need to double dip, for lack of a better term. Also, because I'm moving away, I thought about keeping it, and I cannot run it from out of state. I don't have the help that I need, and I think outside, out of mind. I won't be here to be in front of people talking. So with the Hank board agreement, we're going to dissolve it and turn our assets over to St. Jude's Ranch for Children. Two of their ideas for the homes here is to turn one into a temporary emergency placement, which is desperately needed. The closest one, I believe, I was told, is in Dallas. These kids need somewhere to go instead of sleeping on a floor, somebody's office, or at a hotel. The other one would be used as a resource center so that the parents can have their supervised visitation with the children. Anyway, all of the Hank appreciate everything that y'all have done to help us succeed and to make John's dream come true of the foster homes, and that was his dream and his baby, and he did it. We just hope and pray that y'all will show the same consideration for SJRC Texas and will honor our lease agreement when we dissolve. You've got Moran and Hannah Ford from SJRC Texas are here this morning. If you have any questions, sit down.
Excellent. Thank you. So we have had a little conversation with Debbie about this, had a little conversation with our legal side. There's still, I think, quite a few details to work through on the St. Jude side, but if, you know, obviously as we work through details, we'll bring those to the court to look at, you know, opportunity in all those locations and stuff to work with St. Jude, all those. At this time, I think the main thing, Debbie, is I would just say you, 14 great years of support to this community and this county. I mean, what a great thing Hank has been. I know most of the people probably up here have personally involved, touched Hank at some point, and it's just a phenomenal organization. You guys did some fantastic work with it, and we're very, very appreciative for what you did. We're also thankful to have a new group out there, apparently at the state level, that's really kind of taken that same vision on, which you and John had a vision of that long before a lot of that was happening. So I think you all feel quite good.
We had a vision, and John built it. I mean, he is the one that did it. But on the side note, I was in Alabama looking for a new home last week, and one of the Realtors, as I started talking, "I found my next volunteer job." It's the... They're doing, finding homes for children that are placing out of foster care. And when she said that, I meant, "I think I can do that." I don't want to run it. I just want to be a worker.
Well, thank you for what y'all... Again, you and John, thank you for what you've done, and I will... I'm sure the court, St. Jude, is a great organization, and I look forward to working with them.
It's trying to lose our purpose, which I have a foster homes. Unfortunately, I didn't know it was so difficult. It's difficult enough to find someone that will foster in their own home. You try to get them to move, and it just, it doesn't work.
All right, at this time, we do have visitors, public comments, and this morning we have one, Clarissa Martinez. Clarissa is from the Texas Association of Counties, and she's going to talk about the health improvement that's cool.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Thank you all for having me. All right, so I will keep this pretty brief. My name is Clarissa Martinez. I am the Employee Benefits Consultant for the South Territory at TAC. We like to provide this short little presentation for you all when we have newly elected officials or just to serve as a refresher, to show the value of the TAC Health and Employee Benefits Pool. And so just a reminder, y'all did just renew with the pool this year, so we greatly appreciate your membership. As a reminder, TAC is county-owned and county governed, therefore we are not-for-profit. So this separates us and makes us a little bit different than some of the other major carriers out there, brokerages, who do provide insurance services for you all. Y'all are able to spread the fear of risk among all of our pool members, so this helps to benefit the county, where you use our strength and our numbers, which we have around 48,000 members apart of the pool right now. And so we're able to use all of those slides to negotiate the best discounts with all of our trusted vendor partners, and you'll find those on the top right section of that flyer. And so of course, this is beneficial for you all versus maybe the county just individually going to a carrier to obtain some of those insurance coverages for y'all. Our renewal rates have been consistently below the state and national healthcare trend. I don't know if you've heard from some of the other local businesses out there and some of the insurance renewal rates that they're getting for their medical, but it has been pretty high. For the last year, it's been a 7.13% on the national healthcare trend. So we're able to keep an average annual renewal of 3.9% over the past seven years. Of course, this benefits you all in the rates that you see and the increases year to year. We also have a Healthy County Wellness Program, and this is a program that offers different condition management programs and wellness coaching through different vendor partners that we have. So for example, Levango is used for hypertension management and diabetes management. We've got a few weight management programs called Omata and Wonder Health, and a few other programs that are part of that. Of course, with our Healthy County Wellness Program, we see that this is kind of the risk management to your medical claims. So having high participation and involvement in the Healthy County Wellness Program has really shown, especially here from Medina County, to assist with your medical claims. And so again, all of this information is listed here, a little bit more into detail, but those are some of the, some of the topics that I wanted to discuss with you all today. And then just open it up if y'all have any questions for me. No, lots, I guess.
Questions? Question, please. Yeah.
Thank you all for...
Clarissa, thank you so much. For those that maybe in the room that don't know, TAC is the Texas Association of Counties, created back in 1969, I think, and it's a cooperative really between all the counties, and it's where we're able to combine all of our voices. It really helps at the legislative level. As you can imagine, to try to get 254 county judges and all of the commissioners to appear in Austin throughout the session would be near impossible, and it's so important that we have this voice. I will tell you that the state has made an effort, a concerted effort, to try to silence that voice, and it failed this time, but it is so important to us. Everybody needs to remember that the closest voice that you have to anything is right here at this level, at the county level, and it's very important that we're able to maintain our perspective and what works best for our counties. That's what TAC does, and we appreciate it very much. So thank you.
All right, the only other I'll just announce now, because he probably needs to go to work, is have Doug South here this morning. Just like to welcome Doug. Doug started last week. Doug's our new Facilities Manager, IT point man, and in charge of all the systems throughout the county. He's kind of taken on all the role of the stuff that I did in the past for Judge Schuhart. So Doug, if you'll wave your hand back there. That's Doug, so we'll move forward. Glad you're here.
He fixed my printer this morning.
He fixed your printer. Heard you too, Doug. Don't go home before lunch, though. Awesome. All right, so thank you, everybody. We'll be back, we'll go into recess, and we'll be back at 10 o'clock. Thank y'all. All right, welcome back, everybody. I'm going to call the meeting back to order at 10 a.m. I'd like to welcome everybody to the meeting, if you aren't here for the first part, especially our young people, especially glad that you guys are here today. And we're going to start off with item number 10, which is the presentation of the 4H Bar Awards, Agent Summary, Reports, and Accomplishments, and that's going to come from Terry Penelis. Come on forward.
Good morning. Okay, so we gave you each our program summaries. There's a lot of different papers. You'll probably have to take some time to look through them and really kind of see what it is, but these are what we give our supervisors every year, kind of highlighting our in-depth plans. We also have outreach plans and other things, but these are really what we focus on. We're looking at the needs from my side, the health needs from the sides that I control the needs, and seeing which ways we are trying to fix those, those needs or meet those needs with the different programs that we offer. So it kind of highlights what we've been doing. These only reflect the past eight months, because we've kind of started a new, a new year following a new timeline, but, so these are from, what was it, January up until September. But we would like to just give you all those each year so you can kind of see what we've been doing and what different areas we've been focusing on.
And then you'll also find Medina County, the 4H Program Summary. That's another strong bar extension program within the county. We have a pretty significant impact as far as club members this year, and we're adding a bunch of new programs for these kids, and they're, we're growing. It's already been crazy this year, and it rolled started at the end of August, so it's getting crazy, but we enjoy it. With all that being said, if y'all have, if y'all come up with questions now or down the road, reach out to us, but we're going to transition into our awards. So I'm going to go ahead and introduce our Bronze Star, Ms. Riley Uli. She's 10 years old. She's a fifth grader from La Crosse. 4H, reading kind of how she won this, and she has done a lot for a fifth grader in the 4H program. It's become a significant part of her life in means a lot to her. It teaches skills and knowledge in a wide variety of areas such as agriculture, leadership, and community service. She raises pigs and turkeys and has been pretty successful in that area. And the most exciting experience so far that she's had is winning her first belt buckle with one of her pigs, and that's always a pretty big, big moment for our livestock kids, and they mean a lot, and that buckle will stick with you forever. Just let me let you know that. But Riley has learned a lot through 4H, and she's, she makes note of it in her paper that where she put, and I'll quote she, "I've learned more about community service, leadership, sportsmanship, and stepping out of my comfort zone, to meet new people and try new things." And with that, I think that is what we should try to raise these kids to be like. And so it is our honor to present her with the Bronze Star Award. This is given to our kids that are third through fifth grade. And I want to go ahead and give this to you. Congratulations. Congratulations for that. Down the road, you're going, because you're down that road. So I'll turn it over to these.
Okay. So today we have Ms. Evelyn Duke. So our Gold Star Award is the highest honor a 4H club member can receive through the county 4H program. The Gold Star is only awarded once in a member's 4H career, and is given to a 4H member that provides an application, an essay, and a completion of a record book focused on their project area. So we have Evelyn Duke today. She's 15 years old. She's been heavily involved in the horse project, horse riding and training. Through her experience thus far in 4H, she has learned many things, including how to manage her time better, set goals for herself, and never give up. She's volunteered recently as a team counselor at the 4H camp at Lake Brownwood, and she is inspired by her mom, her dad, and trainer, and she's continuously learning new ways to grow along with using these lessons to explore future career options, which is what we always like to, we think that 4H is doing, really exposing them to different opportunities that helps them figure out what they want to do as they get older and be passionate about it more so. So Evelyn has shown to be a determined and hardworking young lady and sets a great example of what it is to be a 4H member. She represents Medina County very well, and we are happy to acknowledge her today with the Gold Star Award.
Evelyn, Riley, congratulations to you guys. That is quite awesome. We're really proud of y'all. I know the citizens of Medina County are very proud of you. We're going to give you a chance here to get a picture in just a second before y'all take off. That's a really big deal. 4H, all of those ag-related programs, what great programs. I personally think every young person should go through 4H FFA programs, so you're on your road to being fantastic citizens, and that's what we all strive to be. So thank you and congratulations, and we're going to get, we're going to get a photo. You want your parents to come up, you know, take pictures with them when we get everybody together? Sure? Get me some village, right?
I saw you get a little bit, right? Old school with grandpa.
Really? If y'all wait, if y'all kind of shift over, kind of, oh, but we're not exactly shifted today, you know? Congratulations again.
I'd like to be a personal predator with the two little girls and the one mother in here, if you don't mind. I have a personal touch this little girl. I went to school with her grandpa. In all my opinion, everybody says, "Well, what are they doing in 4H? What are they doing in FFA?" If they're doing that, they're not doing something else. Come on over. We want everybody in there to see our husband's grandfather.
You're all are welcome. You're welcome to stay. Do y'all want to go back to school? Evelyn, Riley, or y'all go back to school today?
We do.
No, I think you stay a little bit longer, and then your mom and dad will take you to lunch and all that. It's awesome, but we'll let y'all work that. We don't want to get into that part. Thank you all. All right, item number 11, we have a presentation of the Sexual Assault Response Team of SART Miami over to you. And that is, Swires, are you going to do that along with Christian?
Unfortunately, Christian had been with a victim this morning, so I'm flying solo, but I am Maggie Swires with the Medina County District Attorney's Office. Maggie Swires with the Medina County District Attorney's Office. What we're here on today is talking about the Adult Sexual Assault Response Team. We have someone on a counterpart in the Blue Monet Advocacy Center. The local government code, there was a change to the law in past fairly recent years that requires the Commissioners Court of each county to establish a sexual assault response team. So about this time last year, so you may recall that the court did adopt a resolution supporting the creation of the Sexual Assault Response Team specifically for adults for Medina County. The statute does mandate participation by certain members that are required by statute. And then we're also required every biennial year to present a report to Commissioners Court that includes a copy of our written protocols, which we did develop last year when we established, but that is attached for your review. Talking a little bit about attendance, Wayne Springer is a former sexual assault investigator, and he had offered to serve as our presiding officer because he did have former SART team experience, and so he has served this last year as our presiding officer. We have met quarterly. We have Elda Garcia and also Angela Ivada, who have participated on behalf of the Southwest Family Life Center, kind of locally known as the Women's Shelter. And so they generally are ones that are handling a lot of the intake of the sexual assault victims. I have participated along with Christian Newman, who's our lead trial prosecutor in a lot of these sexual assault type cases. Deputy Ben Morales with the Sheriff's Office has represented that organization or department. Chief Justin Sosa has represented the City of Pondo, and also Lieutenant A.J. Garza has also attended some of the quarterly meetings for us. We're also in the process of adding Chief Kohler from Casterville and Chief Benamita is from Devine to participate in the meetings. Patricia Meckler has attended on behalf of the Medina County Health Unit. Billy Bell and Rebecca Dean representing the Medina Regional Hospital. And so these are our statutory members. Ruby Klein here with the Auditor's Office has served as a valuable member at large. And then we've also had an attendee, Counselor Denise Salceda has participated as well. The requirement for the biennial summary also includes, the requirement to include some statistics. Unfortunately, sexual assault cases on the adult side tends to be heavily underreported. We have a hard time getting victims to come forward. A lot of times they're afraid, they don't want to report, and even when the law enforcement gets involved, a lot of times they don't want it to be pursued. And so looking at the total number of reports that have actually been received by local law enforcement agencies was 26, resulting in about five investigations. And then our office, the DA's office, we only move forward on those cases when the law enforcement agencies actually file the case with our office to pursue. And so we've had one case that's been indicted and is currently awaiting trial. We've had no reports submitted to our office for which no indictment was presented. So unfortunately, that is an area that we strive to continue to work with all of the organizations on the SART team to provide that community outreach, to work with victims, to provide a more victim-centered approach so that victims do feel more comfortable coming forward and cooperating, cooperating and reporting their cases so that they can be fully prosecuted. Questions?
If I had to pick a motion to accept the report?
Do you read your motion?
Yeah, we will accept it because it's a requirement for us.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion over here. Second. I have a motion and a second to accept the Sexual Assault Report Team Biennial Report. Any other discussion? All in favor of I?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Appreciate you. All right. Next item is item number 12, Darcy Hasty, Director of Medina County Pre-Trial Services in Defense, just recognition for an award that was recently they received from the tax. Darcy, if you'll come forward. So Darcy actually was elected to the Texas Association of Pre-Trial Services, the Board of Directors, back in 2022, and she serves as the Secretary for that group, which we're really proud as a county to have you as a member of the Board of Directors there. Darcy's been in pretrial for 13 years, and I believe criminal background about 20, posted 20 years. How many?
24.
24. Probably kind of. 24 years.
I'm only 25, so.
So the board that she serves on was presented an award by the National Association of Pre-Trial Services at their conference in New Orleans, and that was September the 19th that she attended that. And the award was to recognize the commitment to advancing the pretrial justice and the extraordinary and collaborative efforts in the field of pretrial services. So that's a mouthful. Darcy, we appreciate you being there. Of course, Darcy does a great job with our local Medina County Pre-Trial Services. We appreciate what you do. We appreciate you being on that board and proud of you all for the award that you've received. And you have anything you'd like to add to that?
I just greatly appreciate all of the passionate commitment from my team, Curly Lively, Judge Shuhar, Judge Torres, Judge DuBose, for bringing me in and giving me room to grow, and all of you, all the Commissioners, for continuing to budget money for my education and the education of pretrial. It's difficult for us to find education for our field, and so for y'all to budget that money for education is huge. So I do greatly appreciate that because without that, we wouldn't have the pretrial that we have here in Medina County for everybody else in the state to look at because they do look at us here. And that's not, certainly not because of me, that's because of y'all and because of the team that we have here. So thank you very much, and that's leading to rural counties here in Texas having a program to look at, and now there have been three more because of what you all have done here in Medina County, Texas, have started more rural pretrial programs, and hopefully we'll be able to get some more started here in Texas because of what y'all have started here in Medina County. So you have a lot to be proud of. So thank you.
Thank you.
Just like my local conferences, we do go do, I give earning many a ton of people funds to follow while we got started in Medina County. So by your good call, that goes to, evidently worked out very well, and the other counties were reaching out to us how we get things done, but that's amongst other things.
All right. Item number 13, discuss and take possible action on final approval of Los Angeles subdivision located in precinct one off of County Road 4643. Good morning.
Good morning. This project started quite some time back, and actually we had the opportunity to work with three different Commissioners on this. Started out.
Three?
Yes, actually, with Commissioner Newman, and then we ended up working with Commissioner Sider, reviewed the rules again, did some redesigning on the project, and of course, Commissioner Garcia Leoni has visited our office and reviewed as well. What you're looking at on the screen is one of five pages of the final plaque. Go to, that shows a portion of page two and page three, just a little bit of the way of explanation. In the northeastern portion of this particular property, there you go, there's a very low spot that handles storm drainage, flows slowly through the property. Working with Commissioner Sider, there was an area in the northeastern corner dedicated as a conservation area, and that's the reason that those lots are relatively long and narrow, is a portion of that handles storm drainage, but there is still a building on the site. Contractor for Kaiatana Development has done a considerable amount of earthwork in that area. We have gone out with our own survey crew and verified their work against the plans that respect, create, and degrade the drainage, so that has all been submitted and approved. Respect also did the flood analysis to confirm that there is no impact from this development on the adjoining properties. So everything should be in order, to my knowledge, so we are requesting final approval of the plaques today.
Mark, I also want to say before it gets approved, thank you for coming to us and getting all the stragglings out, especially on conservation deals, something they take seriously. We don't hand them out all the time, and you have worked diligently on this project to get it worked, and I thank you for that.
Yeah, we're in our best. Thank you.
So I actually spent a couple hours with Mark going over the plaques and then looking at the flood plain and downstream impact study, and then the contractor and the developer had to do a lot of work to make sure that there was no upstream or downstream impact. So the flood, you know, report and making sure that all of the contractor and developer met all of the requirements in that, they spent a lot of work doing that. I actually got to go up to the site and check it out late last week, so they did a lot of work on it.
With that being said, I will make a motion that we give final approval to the Los Angeles subdivision.
Have a motion and a second to get final approval of the Los Angeles subdivision located in precinct one off of County Road 4643. Any other discussion? All in favor of I?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
All right.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. Item number 14, discuss and take possible action on final approval of Medina Meadows West subdivision located in precinct three off of County Road 512 and County Road 515.
I don't know if you want to say anything about this, or if I can kind of get a little history. This is a subdivision west of the Henness that was named a couple weeks ago. My understanding at the time was, and my concern was that the infrastructure to get water there, which is being provided by West Media Water, was nowhere close, and it turns out the guy is actually right there, close to the street. All they have to do is water near the street, and they'll have the, the ability to water meters in. They've got a service agreement, a contract with West Medina. West Medina is satisfied that they are living up to what they need to purchase the water rights and everything. The contract is not with Medina County. My concerns, I brought to our in-house attorney, Ms. Swires, she suggested that maybe in the future, and this may be another thing we can talk about in a workshop or something, subdivision, when we have a water situation like this, where the water is going to be provided by a local provider, but infrastructure needs to be built, that maybe we have some kind of a bond, like we have the roads, a construction bond, possibly, so that if something were to happen with the developer after these lots are sold and the water is not in place yet, that's actually taking care of, that kind of mechanism. So just food for thought, something to think about. But at this point, I'm okay with moving ahead with this. So I'm going to make a motion that we grant final approval to Medina Meadows West subdivision.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second to grant final approval to Medina Meadows West subdivision located in precinct three off of County Road 512 and County Road 515. Any other discussion? All in favor of I?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Stick around. Yes, sir. Thank you. Next, we have item number 15, discuss and take possible action on final approval of Hunter's Ranch subdivision, unit 14B located in precinct two off of County Road 81.
Hi, Commissioners, good morning, Judge. My name is Angelo Ortega. I'm MTR Engineers. We're here today seeking final plat approval for Hunter Ranch Unit 14B. The object is located within the city of San Antonio, CTJ, Medina County, 64 single-family residential lots. Construction has been completed as of last week, but the city's released a plat for recreation, so we're answering questions down there.
I'll roll over later. Look like our.
No, I have any more.
Section two, I'll give.
I think there's only three more sections.
Two or three.
Yeah, two or three more sections.
And for the new Commissioner, this here is in the EPJ of San Antonio, which you have a lot. This has already been okay through the San Antonio planning board. They get everything first, and we just have to bring it here to verify it here. Everything goes to her janitor's office and gets recorded, so they get these on this problem. So that's really, all the inspections have been done by San Antonio. All the streets were put in to their specifications, which I have to agree are pretty good compared to what we have in Medina County. Yeah, so anyhow, that's what this is, is just a verification that all this work was done, it's already been okay in Barr Canors, San Antonio, whatever they use, in their EPJ, and you probably have 15,000 houses that are going to be involved with this.
So this is Unit 14B, County Road?
Correct. There's three more.
Sixteen, or sixteen.
Altogether, yeah, 900 lots, I think, altogether.
Fourteen, probably not.
Sixteen units?
Fourteen hundred and one lots, not counting Hunter Ranch, the six. And also last week, that's another 60 quadplexes, it'd be 240 more ounces on that, on that end of the street, plus another 240 on 381, on the north end of 381.
One more side.
But another 500. That's another thousand, or EDU, like you're saying. I will make a motion that we will pay the appropriate Hunter Ranch, 14B, located in precinct two.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second to grant final approval of Hunter Ranch subdivision, Unit 14B, located in precinct two off of County Road 381. Any other discussion? All in favor of I? All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 16, discuss and take possible action on preliminary approval of Petranco West Two subdivision, units two and three, located in precinct two off of FM 1957.
Morning, Commissioners, good morning, Judge. My name's Carlos Rodriguez. I'm here with Ted Dawson.
Carlos, good.
Good to meet you.
We've had a lot emailed, thank you.
Yes, sir. I was just sending you a text message for that.
If you see something wrong, reply. Very good.
Yes, sir. Everything's been smooth. Just here to answer, just here to answer some questions. This is a preliminary 50% additional submittal, getting ready for consulting engineers during the final two units out there at Petranco West. For those aren't familiar with it, we're about four or five miles to the west of 211 along Petranco Road. We've got 70 single-family residential lots, 24 acres. We've been working back and forth with the Commissioner Sider and GAN, CBRT, CPS Energy doing the gas, and then the electric, doing all the electric services. Correct. So just here to keep it simple. Anybody have any questions? Like I said, we've been working our end-to-end with all the purveyors and associated parties.
With that being said, I want to go ahead and give one word of approval to Petranco West subdivision two, units two and three, located off of 1957 Petranco Road, through Pecos and the Engineers. And like I say, if you would everyone come by, I'd like to sit down, we hear y'all have paid off, it looks like they got a lot going on in Medina County right now.
Yes, sir.
And I have a good relationship with Pecos and the other Engineers, and I want to keep it that way, and everything that y'all do is right on, right on market.
Fantastic.
So my office is available on there every morning at 8:15 in the morning, sometimes every week.
All righty. So let's give to Mr. Rance. Second motion. I might be saying all that in a motion. I have a motion and a second to grant preliminary approval of Petranco West Two subdivision, units two and three, located in precinct. units two and three located in precinct two off of FM nineteen fifty-seven. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Item number seventeen, discuss and take possible action on beginning contract negotiation with Texas Water Development Board to develop the county master drainage plan. Mr. Scannan, good morning.
Good morning, commissioners, Judge. Alan Samuel Westwood, one of the county engineers here. Here to give an update on one of the grants that we submitted in December of last year. So we submitted two grants. One was a capability and capacity building grant for FEMA, and that was to receive ninety percent federal funding to develop a master, countywide master drainage plan. As part of that plan, we would evaluate the flood risk across the county, in low water crossings, structures, commercial, residential, identify potential projects to take people out of the floodplain, take low water crossings out of the floodplain, and develop projects that can go after further grants and have a planning document available. That grant was approved by FEMA, and so that now goes to the Texas Water Development Board, who's going to be the middleman in that money distribution. The federal award is four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars, and what the county would be responsible for to develop that is fifty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars. So it's ninety percent federal funding. The Texas Water Development Board goes to the board on November ninth to approve contract negotiations with the people who are awarded the grant. And Medina County was one of the fifty-one selected, nationally competitive grant. So very good award. So that is the first grant. I'll just give an update on the second grant as well. That was the DeHennes Flood Mitigation Project. I think the county went after about twelve. It's a twelve million dollar project for eleven million dollars in federal funding. That was selected for award, but there still has some paperwork to go, and the anticipated approval date of that is June, July next year. So I guess, come here today just to give you an update, and you know, once the contract, or the board recommends approval for negotiations, y'all could approve that the county would go into negotiations with the Water Development Board, and then we'd come again to the court to actually start the work once those contract negotiations, negotiations get approved.
Okay, so the one here, the question, or are under discussion, is that yours?
No.
So the oil vein will be coming in later.
That's correct.
Also, I want to thank y'all for bringing this to the Commissioner's Court. I know it was a long discussion before that. We do have, between being precinct one, a lot of water issues over precinct one and two on each end of the county. And would be lovely to work with anybody who needs to do whatever they need to do for that end of the county. I think she's going to have the majority of the problems. I do got some low water crossings I need to work on, and some other smaller streams. But anyhow, I want to thank y'all for the work y'all, bringing two of us to the first act, or we would have never known anything about it.
Sir, and just recap, we met with all the commissioners at the time before we submitted the application, got a list of all their problems, set that in the grant, so we'll reevaluate that, you know, new commissioners court wants it to get awarded, so we're looking at the appropriate areas, the most highest risk.
A couple of questions. So ninety percent federal funding on the grant, roughly four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, county's responsible for about twenty-four thousand, and that is just for the study, for the development of the county water or the master drainage?
So it'll be a, that, yeah, it's the study, which would be a reevaluation of the flood risk throughout the entire county, so redevelopment of floodplains, the development of projects, and the economic analysis to identify if they're eligible for, the projects are eligible for federal money, and then an allocation of, you know, which projects will go after which different grants in the future. So like the grant that we applied for in DeHennes, if there's another project out there that we identify in each precinct, we can start to strategize and prioritize which projects will be the next ones to be funded for grant-supported construction projects. Also, as part of that, we did provide in the grants that the county would reevaluate their floodplain licenses and floodplain criteria, and so that would be another thing that will be evaluated during the planning stage.
So it's going to be the overall master drainage plan, it's going to identify some priorities that we can look at in deeper detail, and then help us identify some additional funding opportunities through grants, so we have a plan that we can pull from as we see new grants coming out from.
Correct. And this, this grant cycle that we went after last year, it's eight hundred million every year for the next five years. And so it just actually opened up right now, but you know, there's no projects available, as far as I know in the county, that are eligible for those, because they haven't been identified and gone through the vetting process. The DeHennes project, there was a prior study done in twenty-eleven that we were able to use that information to go after this grant, and so all we had to do is update the costs to use twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three prices, and then do a benefit cost analysis to get that awarded. And so that would be the process of this countywide study, is to do the cost analysis, so basically doing conceptual design, a cost analysis, and a benefit cost analysis, so that we can identify which projects will be eligible for the ninety percent, seventy-five percent federal funding of different FEMA grant opportunities.
I'll make a motion that we begin the contract negotiations with the Texas Water Development Board to develop the master drainage plan.
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second to authorize the beginning of contract negotiations with the Texas Water Development Board to develop the county master drainage plan. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Item number eighteen, discuss and take possible action on approval of the interlocal agreement between Medina County and Medina Valley Independent School District for the provision of campus security by the Medina County Sheriff's Office. So in front of you, you all have an interlocal agreement. It actually aren't legal, Maggie on her side, legal from the school side, they've worked through the details in these contracts. The only difference that you all have is I point to page two from what was actually in the packet, and it's, it's line item red. And what this is to address is, right now we have ten, I'm sorry, we have nine SROs that we're meeting about that we contracted with them for, and they've come up and have ten, they want another one, they need another one. So we actually, as the county insurer, during the, they pay for those during school year and special events, but during the summertime, we bring those and use them in patrol, and the county pays that salary. So this addresses what just happened, which is, after we just did our budget, Medina Valley comes and says we need another one, and we don't have that many budgets. So what this says is that if they add one, which Medina Valley has agreed to, that until we get to next budget cycle, they're going to pay you the entire work salary until we can budget the next time. And then we also have, if you look early on, it gives a date of August first in there, that they need to give us by that date, is when they tell us how many, so we can plan for our budget. So we don't mind any of them, right? The sheriff doesn't mind any of them, but we just don't have, we don't have any budget to be able to do that. So in this particular case, they will actually keep that officer, and summertime they'll use him to work at their campuses and stuff also, so have control at their campuses, which is probably a good thing for them. So that's, that's what was changed from the one you had to this one to address that issue.
I'll go.
Now, you got anything to add in a second?
I know, we have been working with the various school districts to revise and kind of standardize these school agreements between all of the different districts. So as they come up for renewal, we're trying to get everybody on pretty much the same contract. And then they also had some law changes through the Texas Education Agency that requires the school boards to identify some duties of those school resource officers, and so we're trying to develop that into an exhibit A to make it easily incorporated for each of the districts. So we are doing quite a bit of work to update these agreements as they are.
Thank you, thanks for working on that.
I'm going to approve the interlocal agreement between Medina County and Medina Valley Independent School District.
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second to approve the interlocal agreement between Medina County and Medina Valley Independent School District for provision of campus security by the Medina County Sheriff's Office. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number nineteen, discuss and take possible action on acceptance of the Homeland Security Grant Program Award number four seven five three one zero one for hazardous material spill response trailer. Good morning.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioner. So this is where we get to finally say we're going to take the money. So this is a project that we have discussed in the past, that y'all worked with us on. Looking forward to it. Already started doing some outreach to obtain a trailer, and looking at the products to fill it, to get it out there in the field, doing the things that we need in Medina County for hazmat spill.
Do you, are you going to have any stuff planned up that this needs to be used, or you're going to go and reach out to individual precincts, or how do you want to handle it? We're here to help you out, here if you want to implement it.
Once we get it, and we get it fully furnished with all the supplies that we're going to put in, then what I want to do is I want to go around to all the different fire departments and meet with them, and do some training with them on how we will deploy it. I can also do that at your precinct yard if you'd like. I'd really like to tap the fire departments on this, because they're going to be responding to these incidents anyway. And as I was telling the judge, I can't say for certain that, but the Texas Department of State Health Services has indicated to me that they may give us a second trailer, which would be nice, because then we'd have one more on the south.
I'll go, I have one question. I will make a motion that we take, we take action and accept the Homeland Security Grant.
Have a motion in a second to accept the Homeland Security Grant Program Award number four seven five three one oh one for hazardous material spill response trailer. Can we have a discussion? All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Did you aye?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Item number twenty, discuss and take possible action on approval of the Community Development Partnership Program Letter Agreement with the Lower Colorado River Authority, the LCRA.
Judge and Commissioners, this is one to purchase a UTV, utility train vehicle, looking at a cow size mule, fully outfitted, along with a trailer to transport it, so this would be used for wild and search and rescue, also anything else that we have that would possibly be an incident where we could use this either off-road. I've used these in the past in Bear County even for hazmat responses, where we may have to transport firefighters closer to whatever incident is that they're dealing with. It'd be a great asset for us, both for emergency management, Farm Marshal's Office, and being able to partner with the Sheriff's Office and providing that asset for them, for their operations.
Don't knock on my house.
Unless you have something bad. We hope you don't have anything bad.
Sure, I'll put it under the shed. And with that being said, I will make a motion that we approve the community of the little grant to accept this cause of lucky little deal.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. I have a motion in a second to accept the Community Development Partnership Program Letter of Agreement with the LCRA.
I'll go for it, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioner.
Item number twenty-one, discuss and take possible action on approval of procedure conduct and forum meetings at Commissioner's Court for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. This is just accepting exhibit A, which is the schedule of meetings. May I have the motion on your desk, it's on your desk there.
With that being said, in second time here, I will make a motion that we accept the procedure conduct and go forward with the meetings, the ready for, when they do, date listings.
I have a motion in a second.
Or any other things?
I was going to, I have a motion, and a second to approve the procedure conduct and the forum meetings of the Commissioner's Court for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number twenty-two. Okay, so item number twenty-two. Discuss and take possible action on adopting a resolution supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. So Operation Green Light is a program to recognize our veterans during the week of Veterans Day, and the idea is that at night, that you put a green light on your front porch or buildings, we're going to dissipate our buildings, we're going to do something, and light in front of all of our building screens for this week, and so we have a resolution supporting that, and this is a, is a national effort from the, from NACO, the National Association of Counties that was, that we are a member of. So I'm going to read the resolution, supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. Whereas the residents of Medina County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selfishly, selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces, and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in the maintaining of freedoms and way of life in justice by our citizens. And whereas Medina County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all, and whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in twenty-nine states that help fellow former service members access more than fifty-two billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year, and whereas approximately two hundred thousand service members transition to civilian communities annually, and whereas an estimated twenty percent increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. Whereas studies indicate that forty-four to seventy-two percent of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life, and whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at high risk for suicide during their first year after military service, and whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans, and whereas the Medina County Commissioners Court appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted, therefore be it resolved with designation as a Green Light for Veterans County, Medina County Commissioners Court hereby declares from October sixteen through Veterans Day, November eleventh, twenty-twenty-three, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Therefore, be it further resolved that in observance, in observance of Operation Green Light, Medina County Commissioners Court encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in a window of their place of business, our residents, from November the sixth through November the twelfth, twenty-twenty-three.
I've probably got laws there, or, or, if you're going to work.
I can't, they're not over, so I can't even find them.
I'm making a motion that we adopt the resolutions, supporting Operation Green Light.
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second to adopt the resolution supporting Operation Green Light. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion does carry. Thank you. Thank you. Item number 23, discuss and take possible action declaring items from the following offices as surplus and/or salvage and authorized for disposal. The Sheriff's Office vehicles and outfitting for salvage. Sheriff's Office items from the office and the jail. Office furniture and equipment, salvage. Sheriff vehicles and furniture, surplus. And the county clerk, office furniture as surplus.
I will make a motion that we declare all the following surplus or salvage.
I have a motion to declare the items that are listed as surplus and/or salvage as I stated on the bill of items. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 24 is executive session, the court will leave the executive session. We want to text. Discuss personnel matters, and we won't go into executive session. Item 51, go ahead and close the executive session and re-structure the open session. Item 25, take any action necessary resulting from executive session deliberations. So it was all personnel, and the discussion was around what the courts desire as far as the treasurer's position as the staff will be retiring on the 31st.
I'll make a motion that Commissioners' Court appoint Jennifer Keneckney as the treasurer effective November 1st of 2023.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
I have a motion in a second that the, we have Commissioners' Court appoint Jennifer Keneckney as the treasurer for Medina County effective November 1st. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So Jennifer is, works for Miss Appel currently in her office. So November the 1st, sure, this will give us time to work also through the process of the things that have to take place, which I mentioned before, is there has to be a letter filed in the county clerk's office regarding that this is the appointment. Then in addition to that, she'll have to have a bond that will have to be in place when she takes over, and then of course administering the oath. So we don't have the exact time to work all through that for November the 1st. But that'll, that'll be our plan. And then just to further talk about the process, I think I've mentioned it before, but that, the treasurer's position will be up for election. So that people that are interested in that position will file this year starting November 11 through December 11, the regular filing period. The same with the, so we have the treasurer on there, the one who would not be, and also precinct one commissioner. So those will file, and then they'll go through the entire process. So primaries in March, if there's runoffs, and then all the way to the November ballot. And the only nuance, it's on this particular position that November, next November, when the court canvases the votes, which is generally probably the week before Thanksgiving, that whoever is elected at that, during the November ballot, will take office immediately. Most of the time, it happens on January the 1st, but in this particular case, it's an unexpired term that can all serve out for the additional two years, so it actually happens at the canvassing of the vote. So that's the only kind of nuance to this one. So that will be the plan moving forward, so.
Judge, Jennifer is waiting for an investment conference on November 4th, so could this be done in November?
Oh yes, yeah, we'll work it out with her. Yeah, no problem. Yes, yeah, no problem. It can, it can literally be done any time this morning, but yes, that's.
Because I'm the payroll passenger.
Yes. It can be done any time, starting in midnight, so. Yes, no problem. We can do it. All right. Item number 26 is court announcements.
It's been going great. I am driving, I'm driving all the rest of the county roads in my precincts. I have a lot of mileage. I think I'm the winner in the number of plies that I have. So I'm going to be in all of the other commissioners so far. One of the first things that I wanted to take care of early is the issue that we were having on Cemetery Road, just outside of Honda, because of the recent rains that have a puddle in it. As soon as we moved up to the first part of October, I was ordering materials, so we got that taken care of early this past week, which I've had several people say, you know, thank you very much. We're continuing to get ready for some preservation of our roads where we have a lot of, one, what I call one course surface treatments, or only one seal coat on some of those county roads. We're going to be coming back through with some oil seals to help preserve those. And then looking at our bigger projects as we get towards, when spring just first starts, and then the head of winter, start getting those big projects for the line. But preserving Cemetery Road through the wintertime, that might be wet. I want to get that done as quick as possible. And then in the springtime, I already talked to Commissioner Lynch about getting all the remaining minor repairs done and getting that seal coat. So we've got a nice good continuous top hole in the road.
We've got a lot going on precinct two, just that Ed will know, I think me and Commissioner Lynch might just burn up that 50,000, or we'll go to it.
The damage?
Yeah, we're not going to have a real big party left over with money that we figured out. But anyhow, we are finishing up. We got two and a half gallons of county road 473 that has been totally millet up, one in the other, with my allotment of oil that I'm getting out of the 50,000. We'll be sealing one mile Thursday, which will take about $15,000 off of the oil, roughly $3 a gallon. And then we are starting this morning at 10 o'clock, the tear out of Medina River West Bridge is starting. They had a special make the pipe forest, I think it was in Texas Corrida, and they had that rolled out last week. They do not keep that side of the pipe on hand, but they had it rolled out more back week. So all that's being picked up or delivered this week. Our engineers are still working on that in Westwood, and I think everything going to come together. And I was told, very possibly by Thanksgiving, we're going to have a bridge. If the weather holds up, and I want to thank the court again for coming together and giving the funds to give us a temporary fix, which is just as good or better than what they have before, until we get tax off funding in 2028 and finish the thing up. But other than that, everything is going very well in precinct two.
Yeah, so until we get their oil, we have $50,000 to work with. Commissioners are not going to discuss it. And I think we're going to slide it right under the amount. Hoping, I was hoping that we would get our part done first, that if anybody goes over, it would be him. But I think the way it turns out, I think, I think the way it turns out, we're not going to be ready, so you're probably going to get your done before we do. So it'll be me if we go over, I guess. Anyway, that's on the boards, and also, yes, my precinct's portion of Cemetery Road, until we get some tax funding in January, we probably will not have the funds to do that. If we do, I'll be headed and try to do something now. In the meantime, we're going to just maintain what's there the best we can. And then as soon as funds come in, tax money, beginning of next year, whether permits, we will get together and reseal the whole thing from end to end of what the parts will be. So that's kind of the plan for that. Appreciate everybody's patience and diligence.
So the only other announcement that I do have this morning is, and we'll, we'll actually have some more. Devin will get mentioned a lot between now and the end of the month, but I know we are putting, there's going to be a little retirement get-together that's going to be at her office on Thursday, October 26, from 2 to 4. And I know she would love for you to stop by and give her some funds so she could get, make her move to Alamo or whatever, right? Tonight, what kind of things do you do, what do you do in Alamo?
You go to the beach.
The beach, okay. So anything that would be beach-related is good, awesome.
I'll be a beach bum.
There you go. So Thursday, October 26, from 2 to 4, here in the annex building in her office. So we'll look, we'll look forward to, look forward to the party. Excellent. All right, at this point, I think that's everything, and I will take a motion to adjourn if we have to.
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion in a second to adjourn, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.